Good evening, welcome to tonight's Board of Education meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I need a motion to open the regular business meeting.
Sorry.
Moved by Flo, second by Jason. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carry. Flo, would you lead us in the pledge of allegiance? Okay, this time I need a motion to approve the board meeting agenda. Phil and Mike, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carry. Okay, tonight we have student board representatives reporting, Molly Koenig and Jocelyn. So Molly Koenig, you're up here.
Hi, everyone.
This is working.
Okay, yeah. Hi, everyone. Got sort of a long list. So today we just had early dismissal countywide, went pretty good. Football team this weekend, they won their game against Liberty for homecoming. They also won the bell. We had our pep rally for the first time inside since my freshman year, which was just four years ago. I don't know. But seniors won. We said homecoming, Mikey Henderson and Grover Pemberton won Queen and King. This Thursday or, yeah, this Thursday, October 6th, we have underclassmen photos. Also this Thursday, later at night, is the senior information day at 6 o'clock in auditorium. The honor flight will be taking place this Saturday, the 8th. The PSA Ts are Wednesday, 12th in the gym. Thursday, October 13th, the volleyball program is holding their dig paint game, which is a breast cancer awareness game, and we're going to be raising money for breast cancer. JV game starts at 4:30, varsity in 6. And progress reports are going to be sent out the 14th.
Hi, my name is Jocelyn Decker, and I am a junior. Thank you for the opportunity to serve on the board as representative. On Friday, the 14th, we have our progress report distribution. That means we've been in school for five weeks already, which is crazy. We also have on Tuesday, the 18th, Senior Portrait Makeup Day in the high school library. On Thursday, the 20th, is a college career fair at 10:30 a.m. to 12:30 p.m. On Friday, October 21st, is the varsity cancer awareness game at Gwinnett Field, where we recommend and want everybody working to support breast cancer. On Friday, the 28th, is the senior class and ASK Halloween parade. And on Thursday, November 3rd, is the student council blood drive, all day by mobile blood outside high school. On Saturday, November 5th, is SAT prep, SAT test from 7:30 a.m. at the Port Jervis High School gym. On Tuesday, the 8th, is superintendent's conference day, students have the day off. And then on Friday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, so it's closed. But the Port Jervis High School band will participate in the Veterans Day group. Something that's really cool that our school is now offering is positive referrals. When you think of referral, you often think of something that's bad. But our school has added a positive behavior referral to our school tool management system. We'll use this platform as another way to recognize and celebrate positive student citizenship. These positive referrals will be mailed home to families, so keep an eye out for them. We look forward to a green October, and we'll see you on November 15th. Thank you.
Robin. Robin? Great, thank you Molly and Jocelyn. Now we have a presentation from Ms. Stan Kunis and company. Summer School Field Research 1 and 2 presentation, the Ash Tree Project. Stan Kunis?
Thank you, good evening. My name is Casey Stan Kunis, and I am a high school teacher here in the science department. This summer I was able to offer a course called Field Studies, it's actually Field Studies 1 and 2. It's through Port Jervis High School and in conjunction with SUNY ESF. So it's a dual certification program in the school, we're second summer doing this. Part of the course is a public presentation, and as a science educator, I welcome this department. Science isn't all about these flashy experiments, the big explosions or understanding chemical reactions, but it's a method to solve real world problems and try to communicate our findings. Today, these students are going to present to you a topic that has already affected everyone in this room. Think about the time that it was a beautiful sunny day and your legs went out. It's probably because a dead ash tree fell on those legs. It's also probably reached the public platforms why the superintendent, or high superintendent attendants are running, based on the ash tree problem. So, please listen as these students explain some rather discouraging data and findings, and hear how they are transforming themselves into our future scientists and mandatarians of the world. I present Bridget Seeger as my first speaker.
Hi, I'm Bridget Kelly Seeger. If you happen to know my father, I'm Dennis Seeger's daughter. Hi, hello. Over the summer, 16 students participated in a field trip. I'm sorry, not field trip. Let me repeat that again. Over the summer, 16 students participated in Field Studies 1 and 2 at Reddy Wine Learning Preserve. We collected data on 278 trees in 2021 that were tagged and compared with this data to previously. Basically, last year, we just collected data on each tree's health. About 50% of the trees we found were in worse condition than last year. We also focused on surveying the almost 400 new trees within the preserve and used the results to form a hypothesis and plan for future projects.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Carroll. I will be presenting an invasive species, how bad they are. An invasive species does not normally exist in a ecosystem that lacks natural parameters, and if it is, its population can grow exponentially. Some examples are silver mosquitoes, northern snakeheads, spotted leotard flies, just the name.
My name's Anna Ryan. Another example is Emerald Ashwood invasion that has been destroyed by a once endangered species, 1996.
As you can see, it's very pretty, but small black people. Because larvae burrows through vascular tissue and only has ash trees.
You'll be able to know that ash tree has been killed or infested by Emerald Ashwood, by the holes in the trunk, loss of bark release, S-shaped galleries, and epic or epicornic shoots.
There are example pies and S-shaped galleries, epicornic shoots. These shoots are designed to make trees stressed out.
Hi, I'm Rachel Durye, and I'll be presenting our research and protocol. So this summer, we started our research out by resurveying the trees that we found last year, and we collected their diameter, bark percentage, canopy cover. And of those 389 trees, we found only 278. And we believe this is because the coordinates on our Google Earth where we recorded the trees were super accurate, so we thought this kind of was a waste of time. But instead, we switched up our protocol. Instead of, we switched up our protocol, and we developed a much more efficient way of doing things. And instead, we did 20 by 20 few quadrants. And we just basically searched the area so we could find as many trees in the area as possible. And we found a lot more trees, and we recorded them and tagged them much more efficiently. So next year, it should go a lot better, and we should, you know, find our trees. Thank you.
So, one thing that was mentioned, I've not really mentioned, that we went over when going back to the old trees, what are tree cores? And most, most of the time, like when you see stuff of a cut down tree, there are like these rings on the inside of it. And using the cores that we got from the trees, we were actually able to like see the rings and like see how actually all the trees were like before there's whatever, um, when we got them. So it does actually take a while to extract the core from a tree. So it's pretty difficult to get them out. We hope to use the data in the future to provide insight on wood trends on ash tree survival.
Hi, my name is Sandra, and I'll be presenting the data that we found. In 2022, 278 trees are resurveyed from 2021, 322 new trees were tagged and surveyed. This chart shows 2021 to 2022 tree health based on canopy cover. Red indicates the tree has less than 40% remaining of its canopy. Yellow represents 40 to 79% of the tree's canopy is intact. Green shows the healthiest trees with 80% over the canopy cover. We chose to use canopy cover as a health indicator because Emerald Ashwoods destroy the tree's vascular tissue, and water cannot be transported up to the crown, and the leaves die. Comparing these two charts, we believe there is a very grim picture painted for the ash trees, but we think some of this data could be misrepresenting. In 2021, we just haven't learned to identify ash trees. Therefore, we must tag as many dead trees of about leaves or bark, since those features were what we were looking for. Last summer, we were much more proficient, and our updated protocols helped us identify declining dead trees. Additionally, last summer, much of our research was conducted in drought conditions versus normal precipitation summer in 2021. We are excited to use the new protocols this summer in 2023, so we can more quickly compare our sample sets. We will also be relying on our data from almost 600 trees, and this will also give us a better data set to utilize.
Hello, my name is Zachary Hoff, and I will be showing you guys some lovely maps. Okay, so just in case you've forgotten, green means healthy, the yellow is declining, healthy, and red is dead or dying. Now, this is just the general location of all the trees in the preserve. Now, if we focus on the northern region, you'll see that the majority of the dead trees are located near missing territory and believe that the salt from the road has affected the tree's health, and of course, also the EABs. Now, in the western region, we have not that many trees, so there's not much to look at. And in the southern region, there's a pretty equal distribution of health between the trees, and we want to focus on this region to see the change in the upcoming years.
So this is a comparison of 2021 versus 2022 data in the southern site. And this is where we located many declining trees, which is why we want to focus mainly on this area in 2023. And you can see that in the 2021 data, the pinpoints are a lot less precise than this year's. And that's because we used better equipment this year that gave us much more precise coordinates. Another map, so this is a precise map of the location of the trees, and we'll be using this next year to locate our trees so that we can resurvey them.
Hi, guys, I'm also part of this. So, we hope to further keep this research going on, so we created some goals as a group. For some short-term goals, we want to survey more trees and establish a protocol, which we did, which I believe Rachel mentioned, which became a lot more efficient with all of our findings. Some long-term goals are testing surrounding factors like soil and that type of more environmental stuff. We want to find something that can control the EAB to keep it polluted in a certain area. We want to organize the data and re-tag the trees that we already found and that we have to find. Study some lingering ash, which is something that is, is the decline in the ash trees and the migrations. I don't know if someone's looking into that. And we want to catch one of these EABs and see what can go on with that. And so for some legacy goals, we want to continue moving past data and bring it to our present data, lower the EAB population, and study and understand our data systems. And some new studies, we got to meet with this man, Dan. He was ecologist and professor at Brown University, and he gave us some ideas to help with furthering our research. And the lingering ash is studying the ash trees that have become healthier over the past year. We created and studied some traps, see if it would be an effective solution. We hope to further that in 2023. And the biodiversity, which is moving out of the biotic and abiotic factors in the ecosystem.
Hello, my name is Julia Elsman, and part of our research involves how to curb the EAB population within our area. And we, while we were looking back at the data, we really just wanted to have focus on how we could actually save the ash trees. And part of that is by eliminating the EABs. And so we found three potential solutions, which you can see on the screens, involve traps, pesticides, and biological controls. The part that I will be focusing on is the traps. We created traps and research traps that had a tri-pole pattern of either green or purple as a way to attract the EABs to them. And they also have a sticky coating around them so that the EABs will actually get trapped in them. The issue is that they are not entirely effective in all ways because they also trap insects that are important to the ecosystem and are necessary. So they're not entirely the best possible case scenario. But we actually did design our own trap, and you can see it there on your screens. So, thank you.
I'm Richard Gill, and I'll be presenting another solution that we have, which is basically pesticides. And if you don't know what a pesticide is, it's basically a chemical compound that are used to kill EAB. They also could kill or harm other bugs as well. And they're more effective in edges of the forest, not really in the center. However, as a long-term solution, this is unlikely, a good one, for saving ash trees across our country.
Hi, I'm Gabe Torres, and I'll be focusing on the biological control part. So, a biological control is an introduced species that will only affect the desired organism in a negative way. In this case, the parasitic wasps that we will be introducing would only prey on emerald ash or larvae eggs, which decrease the population and negatively impact the survival rate. Many studies show extremely positive results with the introduction of these wasps in the ecosystem. And we are thrilled to report that we have been given permission to obtain through the USDA APIS program these wasps for release and study at Reddy Wine Learning Preserve next year. We will be monitoring EAB and wasp population in addition to our regulated data collection. We will be the first in our region to be releasing these wasps, and the first to start truly saving our ash population.
Hello, I'm Shane Seeger, and I'm here to talk about the future of our program. See, I don't think I have to really specify that it is a grim scene with the ash trees. However, we are hopeful for 2023 that we can combat it with our new studies and our new techniques. So hopefully, you can join us in 2023 when we do try and save this scene from the disaster of losing the ash trees.
Finally, I would just like to say a few thank yous. So thank you to Port Jervis School District for offering this course, to SUNY ESF for offering their field research credit, and the Reddy Wine Institute for providing financial aid and allowing each student to receive a college credit with no cost to them. And thank you for your time. Now, if anyone has any questions?
Have you talked about the equipment that you're using to monitor this, where the equipment coming from?
So I apply to pay for grant every year. I just paid $750, not really what it sounded like, you know, right? Is it different?
Where exactly are these trees located to us?
So these are, so Reddy Wine Learning Preserve, so it's just off Route 6. It's like if you were to go down, pull down, turn right, it's around there. So just on the other side of it.
So what is an ash tree?
What is an ash tree?
Yeah.
So it's, it's one of the top six trees in our deciduous forest. It's that tree, and I'll explain it. So it's a tree that has a diamond-shaped bark with a really high branch set. So like the branches all come from the top.
So these aren't trees we're going to see in our yard, these are trees we're going to see out in the middle.
You might have them in your yards, yeah. And a good way to indicate if you have ash trees present in your yards or your local woods is look for really thin crown-like tree covers. Those are probably ash trees. You can see them on Google, or if you don't like it in a satellite image, you can see whichever ash tree is.
Thank you.
Thank you all for your time, see you next time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jane Brutus, and students, I see some of my former students in there. I didn't recognize when they go beards after they're 10 years old. Thank you, that was impressive, and you'll have to come back next year and fill us in on your most recent research.
Absolutely, thank you.
We don't have anyone signed up for public comment tonight, so we're going to move on to administrative reports. Dr. Bell?
Okay, thank you. I have a few echoes from the audience. Of course, the girls stole a few of the things, but that's okay. First thing, I just wanted to wish everyone a happy yom kippur for those who follow the Jewish faith. Secondly, I wanted to mention the district calendar, I forgot to mention it last month. But it's a beautiful calendar if you've never seen it, and we have it available for anybody in the community who hasn't received them at home. You can pick them up at any of the school offices, or you can swing by the district office on Thompson Street. They're really a beautiful calendar. And even if you don't have kids at school any longer, there's nice big boxes that write things into it. For doctors' appointments, that's what we do as we get older, right? We put all the doctors on point. So they're, but they're a beautiful calendar. I also wanted to mention the Hall of Fame. This Sunday is the 10th edition of the Port Jervis High School Alumni Hall of Fame banquet. And the inductees this year are Dr. Harry Fowler, from the class of '28. That's 1928, I can imagine that. Dr. Frank Simpson, class of 1947. Jack Flynn, class of 1957. Nelson Keeves, class of 1965. David Simmons, class of 1966. Ari Troby, class of 1970. Lisa Cullen Cooper, class of '79. And Mara Kelly Decker, class of '85. There still are about 24 hours, if you'd like to order tickets. If you call the district office and speak to Jeri Ann, we can still squeeze you in. There still are a few seats left. But that's Sunday at 4 o'clock at the Erie Trackside Manor. Just wanted to remind everybody that there's no school next Monday in honor of Columbus Day. And the girls had mentioned that the first mark of period progress reports for secondary schools occurs on October 14th. For the elementary kids, they do trimesters, so the first trimester progress reports will be distributed on Friday, October 21st. That's a week later than the secondary schools. And that's all I have tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Bell, and Dr. Wolkowitz.
Good evening. Just a quick reminder, tomorrow we kick off our professional learning committee meeting at 3:30 in the ASK computer lab. We're going to continue to plan our November 8th conference day. We started last spring for our September and November conference days. And it will be an extension of our September conference day work. Our education committee is going to kick off next Wednesday at 3:30 in the high school library. We'll work to accommodate in-person and remote options for both of these workshops, both the professional learning and ed committee, just so everyone can, who signed up can attend. And we're going to rotate our education committee between 3:30 and 5:30 slots every other month. So you can attend if you can't make the 3:30, we'll have one the next month at 5:30. And middle school and high school students, if you want to be on the student voice committee, just make sure you use yours or the principal's to sign up. And elementary, I think, are going to start theirs as well. And just, we had our first MTSS, which is Multitierred Systems of Supports, district-wide training last week. And our focus was implementing and evaluating our tiered interventions for behavior, social, emotional, learning, and academic supports. Our focus this year is building up our tier one interventions and refining our tier two and three interventions. And since the start of our work last year, I just want to do some shout-outs to our buildings. So they have some data, success data to report. I'm going to start with the high school. They set out with a goal to improve student access to instruction and time in class. They, they understand that more students spend, the more students, the more time students spend in the classroom, their academics performance improves. So through a collective of community efforts in the building of implementing tier one interventions, they saw a drastic improvement when comparing last September to this September data. Specifically, they had a 57% fewer class cut rate this year from this September to last September, and a 50% decrease in referrals overall for the first month. That high school also kicked off, kicked off their positive behavior referral system, which was mentioned by our students tonight. So parents, you may get some positive feedback in your kid, from your kids via letters home. So don't be afraid to open the school mail to receive these referrals and can take them on your refrigerator. Our middle school is starting push-in services for, as their support model for our ELA math. And our elementary programs are volunteer, their character ed programs, they're very robust this year because they are implementing their PBIS as well. You will start seeing Port Pride 5, some samples right here if you want to take one home. That is our, our district-wide commitment. We met over the summer and made commitment to these Port Pride Fives. And you'll see that all over the whole district, and we hope to bring it into the community of Port Jervis so that our community members can recognize students with these nice characteristics that we value so much in our schools. And of that overall support from our community and within our schools. So thank you very much, that's it.
Before we pass it on to Mr. Tim, could you read the five?
Oh. I'm sorry, you can't?
Can't see them all the way up here? So our Port Pride 5 is, we want everyone to do their best to be kind, be honest, be responsible, be respectful, and be involved. So those are defined in very different ways depending on whether you're in the hallway, athletic events, everything. So we're spelling all those expectations out for everybody. So that's it.
Great, thank you. And Assistant Superintendent for Business, Mr. Johnson?
Thank you so much. So full disclosure, I've mentioned Stairwell 2 with abatement. The abatement is taking a little bit longer than expected. We are actually a few to several weeks behind at this point because of this. Dr. Bell, Don Priest, and myself are working with the architect and the project managers to get moving along here and expedite the process to get things moving. We have a bunch of contractors chomping at the bit, ready to go. So we just have to get through this. So, we just have to get through this. And hopefully in two weeks from now, when I report, we'll be moving along. So, that's the middle school update. For safety, our consulting group, Altaris, safety has met with our building leaders. I thank all the building leaders for the time that they took to meet with Altaris. They said it was a great experience under the D-back. They've conducted an assessment on each building, safety-related. I look forward to the results. It's gonna take a few weeks to compete, excuse it, to complete. I'm awaiting the feedback to hold our next safety meeting. So, a safety meeting typically is held by now. I'm waiting for Altaris to get back to me so that we can have them join us with that safety meeting. And at that same time, it's what the Health and Wellness Committee needs as well. So, that should be happening soon. And another, something that's happening is Don Priest and myself met last May month with some reps from a company called CP Energy. And I serve, which is the New York State Energy Research and Development Authority, through the, something called the Green Schools Initiative, are offering grant opportunities. There's a lot of money out there, some low-hanging fruit, as I call it. We're looking into some HVA units and other ventilation units, some high-efficiency boiler replacement units. This is separate from all our projects. We're actually looking into a solar farm and all funded basically by, through this grant. So, with Don, Mr. Priest and I have done some work on that. So, I didn't wanna shock you with this, but we are behind the scenes applying for this and working diligently with them. So, to be determined. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tim. Next, we have consent items. Consent items include 5A minutes of the September 20, 2022 board meeting, 5B CSE meeting minutes for 9-9, 9-13, 9-14, 9-16, 9-19, 9-20, 9-21, 9-22, 9-23, 9-26, and 9-27, 2022; 5C CPSE meeting minutes for 9-6, 22, and 9-27, 22; 5D disposal requests for outdated and irreparable equipment. I need a motion for approval of all these consent agenda items. Luke Byflo, second by Nancy, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next, we have personnel employment items. These items include 6A, leave of absence; 6D, retirement, administrative staff position 3032, athletic director; 6C, resignation, support staff, substitute cleaner; 6D, appointment vacancy 2421, co-curricular club advisor, coach, intramural, hourly instructional positions for the 22-23 school year; 6G, appointment administrative staff vacancy 2488, position 3032, probationary athletic director; 6F, appointment substitute teachers for the 22-23 school year; 6G, appointment support staff, substitute school monitors and substitute teacher aides; 6H, change in status, support staff, probationary to permanent status, position 3715, senior food service helper; 6I, amendment to employment contract, personnel assistant, Jessica Ellsworth; 6J, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from April 21, 22; 6K, amendment to board docs, personnel agenda item from August 9, 2022. I need a motion to approve all these personnel agenda items?
Vary. Second.
Motion by Bill, second by Mike, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried.
I just wanted to add two additional comments. The first thing is, Mr. Hollig, if you wouldn't mind, just giving a wave. I wanna recognize Mr. Hollig. Mr. Hollig and I came to Port Juris at the same time. He came as a first-year teacher and I was going to kindergarten. But he's been around as long as I can remember and he's been working here at PJHS all that time. And we just can't say enough thank yous to Ray for everything he's done, whether it was a freshman football coach, JV wrestling coach, guy in the Bannock dynasty in the 70s, being a phys ed teacher for many, many years, and then being AB at the end of his career. We really appreciate everything, Ray. Thank you very much. Now, Ray 2.0, we wanna introduce. Our new athletic director will be coming here right after Thanksgiving. He'll be spending a week with Ray, is JJ Gass. JJ, would you like to wave to everybody? JJ's currently the athletic director at Eldred, so he and Ray go to many of the same meetings already. And we're really excited about Ray passing the baton to JJ. So, they'll have a week together right after Thanksgiving before Ray's retirement on Friday, December 2. We thank Ray and we welcome JJ very much.
Thank you, well said, Dr. Bell. Moving on to action items. We have 7A, the adoption of our board goals for the 22-23 school year. I need a motion and a second to bring this item to the floor. I'll put it. Hi, it's Nancy. All in favor? Opposed? Or, sorry, any discussion on this item?
Do you wanna mention the board?
Thank you.
We worked with the board on developing goals at the board level. And what will happen is, we'll take these back to the school level and we'll develop SMART goals at each school that will reflect and help the board reach these goals. But the four goals, the first goal is to improve student programs, both academic and extracurricular. The second goal is to educate the whole child. And the five tenets of educating the whole child are ensuring that all students are safe, healthy, supported, challenged, and engaged. The third goal is to continue progress on the capital project while maintaining fiscal stability and responsibility. And finally, goal number four, probably the one I'm really, really excited about because I think it's a different direction than anything we've tackled before, is goal number four is to be a vital asset to our community. So, that's working collaboratively with the community and also making our facilities as available as possible for the community to use because it's part of their investment when they pay their school taxes every year. It's not an expense, it's an investment in our community and it's an investment in our kids. So, improve student programs, educate the whole child, continue work on the capital project and financing, and be a vital asset to the community.
Any more discussion on board goals? Okay, all in favor?
Right.
Opposed? Motion carried. 7B is a grant from ONR. It's a STEM grant to the middle school in the amount of $987.75. I need a motion and a second to bring this item to the floor. Flo? Nancy, any discussion? I'd just like to say thank you to ONR. And I believe it was Smeebel who secured it from what I saw. So, thank you. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. 7C is a policy first reading, policy numbers 5241, 5321, and 5540. Nancy, would you like to elaborate on those a little bit, on the changes?
Most of the changes were more verbiage and personalizing them for the Port Juris School District. It was nothing terrible.
Okay, I need a motion and a second. Bill and Mike, any discussion on those? All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. And 7D, policy first and final reading, policy numbers 5330, 5340, 5520, 5550, and 5560. I need a motion and a second to bring them to the floor for discussion. Sorry, Annie and Flo? And any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Next up, we have board member items. Just as a note for board committee reports, after a short hiatus, the board has brought back the Buildings and Browns Committee. Does anyone have any committee reports? Any committees need this past meeting? Go ahead, Nancy. I know, policy committee.
This is the policy committee. We met on October 3. There was nothing under new business, so we went to some bold business. We talked at great length about two policies that had previously been tabled. Both of these were discussed. And again, many of these, when we review them, we just change a lot of the verbiage and we, you know, identify Port Juris more specifically in them. So, they were on the agenda today for the reading of the mental policies. And then, of course, we went through the six policies that were on a first and final read. We discussed, we were very busy. We discussed eight other policies. And all of those policies were referencing financial issues and financial policies within the district. They were, we felt they were all still appropriate and we're gonna mark those as reviewed and move on from there. There were, let's see, four other policies that were tabled at that, at this time. Some, most of them also having to do with finances. And at this time, we just felt we needed some further information to make sure we were still right on the money before we made any revisions changed or felt that they were totally appropriate. So, we adjourned after an hour and the next meeting will be on October 3.
Okay, thank you, Nancy. Annie, anything from Port Juris?
We will be holding our Halloween lighting contest. And we have two categories, the traditional fall or scaring. So, there's a lot of information. So, you can go to this website. And you would click on events and it'll give all the information.
Thank you, Annie. Anything from Deer Park, Flo?
No.
Any other committees? Thank you. Next up, 8B. We have revised board event meeting calendar for 22-23. Dr. Bell, do you like to explain any changes in that?
Sure, thank you. What we're looking to do is instead of having two meetings in January and two in February, we'd just like to have one in January and one in February. That's the time of year while we're still compiling budget information and we haven't put it all together for you. But we feel we can cover everything we need to budgetarily by having one meeting in both those months. So, if it's okay with you guys, we would put it on the agenda next time for approval for revisions. And instead of, instead of meeting on January 10 and January 31, we'd meet in the middle at January 17. And then in February, instead of meeting on the 14th and the 28th, because Valentine's Day would give us some trouble with a lot of our spouses, we would meet on February 21 instead of the 14th and 28th. We'll put that on the agenda if you're okay with it. Never wanna do Valentine's Day or St. Patty's Day.
Thank you. Next, we have board member comments. So, Jason, we'll start with you.
Real quick, I don't make comments a lot, but JJ, welcome. And Mr. Hollig, congratulations. To this day, I still tell jokes that you taught us in class. Some appropriate for the meetings, some not. Many fond memories. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you. Judy?
I want to extend the same. Congratulations, welcome. And Mr. Hollig, we're gonna miss you. You have truly been the essence of what Port Juris is all about.
Thank you, Nancy.
I wanted to thank Ms. Stankluis's class. And just as an aside, I think we saw the new news anchor for Channel 2 News standing up there. She was quite dynamic. I mean, it was a wonderful program.
I'm gonna lose sleep tonight over these ash trees.
I didn't think that these could be the next, you know, Storm Fields or something. Sam Champion or something. Anyway, it was very good and I enjoyed that. And also, welcome to JJ and Ray Hollig. Ray, Ray, Ramon. Oh, my God. All three of my kids had him and they still talk about you. You are an icon. And yes, they tell you jokes. That we'll not get into them here, but having worked with you also, it was a pleasure to work with you. I wish you nothing, you and Linda, nothing but the absolute best in your retirement.
Thank you. Annie?
JJ, I've worked with your wife, you know, and I do welcome you to Port Juris School District. And we are all here. If you need anything, please don't hesitate to ask us. Ray? What can I say? I can't say it on TV. We go way back.
I'm telling you a joke.
Right? And I do wish you the very best, you know? And you and I have to go out for that cabasse. I do wish you the best. And it was, working with you, I've learned a lot in the 35 years I've been here. And I do wish you well and your wife. And Mrs. Stankluis's class, like Annie said that, but like, I remember him in my office sitting there. He wants to go home all the time. And when I saw him come up here and talk, I was just, I was just, you know? But I do want, I do like to see the children come and give us presentations and see what, you know, what it's all about here, what's the teaching, what they're learning, express it to us and go, I've learned a lot. I eat wasps. They were telling me about the wasps and stuff like that, but it was a pleasure. And more, I hope we do have more presentations.
Thank you, Annie. Mike?
I too would like to thank Mrs. Stankluis. Her presentation was great. I spent a lot of time in the woods. I don't know what all those trees are, so now, now I know what an ash tree is. Also, I'd like to thank Mom and Jocelyn, who's not here, for being on board, sharing some information with us tonight. And Mr. Hollig, I'd like to thank you for all your years. You were my favorite phys ed teacher. My fondest memory, asked Matt Spello to name me, told me it was holy kid. Something I'll ever forget. So, Mr. Hollig, thank you for all your years. We appreciate it. Wish you the best. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Flo?
Well, I guess I'm on the end, that one at the end. And Mr. Hollig, thank you so much for all you've done for Port Juris School. JJ, congratulations, welcome. You mentioned, Holly, we did mention parade and we're off, but the music department still goes to the veterans' parade. I don't know if I mentioned it before, but I don't think I, I might have missed one or two of my life in Port Juris. They are there every parade that Port Juris puts on, the music department here. And I wanna tell you, I mean, it does my heart good, I mean, to see them on a holiday, for a weekend, whatever the, whatever the day is that we have walked, and they're there in a group. And I don't, I don't think we say it enough to thank them because these kids need to thank for, you know, yeah, their stomach gave in and nobody put her, whatever. But they come out. And I think it's such a rewarding gesture to see and play an instrument and walk. I wanna thank them. And for my heart, thank you so much for the music department, for these kids that do this. Everybody knows what this weekend is. I think I talked about it once or twice. It's our Honor Flight Weekend. And I'll tell you, we're bringing 87 veterans down to Washington DC for the day. And I don't talk much about it, you know, it's not right. But if you can at night, I know it's too early in the morning, but if you can at night, 8:30 at night, just to an airport, to see what we do and what we have there. It's just like you'll never, you'll never forget again. And I just wanna thank everybody who's done stuff, you know, for a veteran. And what Michael did, Matthew, you know, Mitchell, had all three of them on the lap. Like, Mitchell did, two weeks ago, there was this lesson. The ash trees, I was impressed. I, like you said, I know trees, I see trees, I don't know what they are, but now they're the ones. And it's so important because so many trees are being destroyed by bugs or insects or something. Get those wasps in here, right here. Get those wasps out of here. And thank you, thank you for what you've done. I think I told you enough.
Thank you, Flo. Bell?
Yeah, I remember the presentation from last year with Stankluis's class. Just I've known a lot of these students since seventh grade also. And just seeing how they've grown and the determination they have putting forth this. Also, JJ, welcome to the meeting. And you sound like everyone else, Ray. I know you've 16 years I'm here and Port Juris Athletics is what it is.
I know you've 16 years I'm here, and Port Jervis Athletics is what it is because of you and your determination and will. So I wish you and Linda all the best, and good luck to you.
And I'd just like to reiterate that, uh, Mr. Hollig, my ninth grade PE teacher, I wish you the best of luck. A lot of great things happened on these athletic fields, um, on your watch, so best of luck to you. Congratulations. And JJ, welcome. Bear with me, we have quite a few dates to remember. Um, I'll try to go through them as quickly as I can. Uh, September 30th to October 7th, the HVE Book Fair. October 6th, HVE Family Night, the book fair also. Um, October 6th is also Senior Information Night at 6:00 PM at the high school auditorium. October 6th, Underclassmen Picture Day at the high school. October 10th, Columbus Day, school's closed. October 11th through 14th is the Middle School Spirit Week. October 11th is the high school PTSA meeting at 7:00 PM in the high school room 133. October 12th, ASK PTA meeting at 7:00 PM in the ASK library. October 12th, also the PSAT exam, 8 to 12:30 in the high school gym. October 14th, HVE Fire Safety Day. October 16th, the ASK Call Run at 11:30 at ASK. October 18th is the next Board of Ed meeting, 7:00 PM in the high school cafeteria. Um, I need a motion to adjourn. Flo, second by Andy. All in favor? Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, thank you. Have a great night, everyone.